Okay, Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Boss will be late. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Alder Skidmore.
Here.
Alder Hennig. I see him.
Present.
Okay, great. Alder Tierney.
Here.
Alder Campbell.
Here.
And Alder Bedar.
Present.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. And can we go to Stefan for meeting protocols?
Sure, yep. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. In this meeting, members of the staff or members and staff are able to unmute themselves. Please mute yourself when you're not speaking in order to avoid background noise. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Loring, your hand will take you out of the queue. There are no members of the public registered to speak, so President Carter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And can we get, first of all, are there any corrections or edits, revisions to the minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And it's been moved and properly seconded. There's no objections. I'd like to record a unanimous vote. Okay, there's no objection. I will be recording a unanimous vote on the minutes. There's no public registered for public comment, so we'll go straight to disclosures or refusals. And I see there are no disclosures or refusals. So the next item is item five, introduction of our new Chief of Police, Chief Barnes. Are you with us?
Yes, ma'am.
I see that you are. Would you like to say a few words, inspiring, thought-provoking, motivating words?
Yes, I will. I will start with the way I started this morning at the mayor's meeting. I woke up today, the luckiest person in the world. I woke up in the best city in the world, Madison, Wisconsin. I woke up as the Chief of Police for Madison, Wisconsin. And so I am excited about this opportunity. I am excited to be an ambassador everywhere I go from here on out with the Madison flag attached to me. Let me say that I am certainly eager to begin the work of repairing community trust with our police department. I'm certainly eager to begin the work of making Madison the safest city in America and the best place to live. I believe I play a huge part in that. I can only do that with your support, with your advice, and with your criticism. And so I hope that I will have all three of those as we move forward. If at any point I can do anything to add education about what we're doing in the police department, or making your sections, or your areas of responsibilities safe, please let me know. Obviously, it can be reached through the city email or through my cell phone, so just know that you have a direct line to me. I've been here for about three weeks now, prior to yesterday, getting to know the community as well as internally. And I'm thoroughly impressed with everyone that I have met. Everyone seems to want to have a hand in public safety. And really, that's the only way it works. It's called effective partnerships. And so my vision is that the Madison Police Department will be the national model for exceptional policing through our commitment to selfless public service, effective community partnerships, and evidence-based policing practices. I believe that is certainly attainable. And I thank you for the opportunity to greet you today. I wish we could be in person. I think we all kind of feel that way. But certainly over Zoom, this is the best I could do. But I'm sending everybody a big hug because that's who I am as a human being. And so I look forward to working with them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I hope that you'll be able to stick around this meeting a little bit longer. We will go into item six, our mayor, Satya Rhodes Conway.
Thank you, Council President Carter. I have a few things to go through today, but I want to start, if you'll indulge me with a point of personal privilege, and say, Alder Harrington McKinney, how incredibly glad I am to have you here with us today. And I hope you know how much everyone across the city is wishing you well and continued healing. And I also want to say congratulations to Grandma Kemble. It's just delightful to see the additions to your family. I hope you're enjoying that. And another welcome to Chief Barnes. If you haven't had a chance to see, oh, yay, baby pictures. Excellent, thank you. If you haven't had a chance to see Chief Barnes swearing-in ceremony, I think it's worth watching, not for my speech, but for his, to get a flavor of his background and how he's thinking as he starts into the job. So I promised a few updates on federal issues, guaranteed income, and violence prevention. I'm going to try and go through those quickly. I know that you have an agenda in front of you, but there is obviously a lot going on since the last time I was here to update, particularly on the federal level. So I'm not going to try and recap all the history here. I assume you all have kept up with most of it, but just wanted to say that now with President Biden and Vice President Harris in office, there's just a complete sea change with, in terms of our relationship with the federal government and the attitude that I'm feeling from various federal offices and departments. I've had the opportunity to have very positive conversations, mostly in a group setting with other mayors, with representatives of the Department of Transportation, HUD, the Intergovernmental Affairs Team in the White House, the Special Climate Team also in the White House, and others. And it's just been really clear how much folks in the administration understand the importance of cities and are interested in partnering with cities in general and with Madison in particular. So I'm feeling quite hopeful about having very positive and strong relationships with the new federal administration going forward. And hope to continue, we're obviously working with our representatives in DC, Simon and Company, to, you know, do those introductions. And as the different departments get staffed out and people get confirmed, you know, to have those meetings and to make sure that agencies understand our priorities and that we can have as much influence as possible there. I'm sure you've seen a number of executive orders have come forward from the White House recently, too many to cover, but I just wanted to hit some highlights. There's a number of things related to climate, notably moving the US back into the Paris Accords, but also pushing forward with the electrification of the federal fleet, which is obviously something that we've been doing here in Madison already. A number of things on the healthcare front here, most noticeably, the reopening of the exchange under Obamacare. And just to note that that is from February 25th to May 15th. And so folks who aren't currently covered will have a chance to go into the exchange and get coverage, which I think is obviously quite important right now. And I'm hopeful that we can start to collectively share that information out more broadly, so that anybody who might need to know about it is informed and has the opportunity to access healthcare coverage. Also, a number of executive orders and actions around racial equity. Of particular note here is taking action to prevent housing discrimination, sort of coming back to that work again, which is, I think, quite exciting and overdue. Moving away from private prisons, and a whole slew of things on the COVID-19 pandemic, only one of which is returning to the 100% FEMA cost share, which is, I think, great news for local governments and public health. They did extend the CDC moratorium on evictions until March 31st. So that's a really important update. That was, had been until January 31st, and now is March 31st, and hopefully will go even longer than that. And then a number of actions around immigration, including restoring DACA. So just a lot of action happening, and I think really worth keeping up with. If any of you are interested in more details, we do get regular updates from Simon and Company. I'm happy to share those if folks are interested or want to contact our office and ask on a particular topic. Looking forward, I'm sure, again, you all know that the Biden administration has proposed a rescue package. It includes a number of things that would be quite positive for the city of Madison, including increased funding for both vaccination and testing, direct checks to individuals, a bunch of work around reopening schools, continuation of paid leave, $400 weekly increase in the unemployment insurance at the federal level, and a continuation of work share. It would extend the eviction moratorium through September, and increased, or another round of rental assistance, additional funding for homeless services, for continuing the SNAP expansion, $15 minimum wage, funding for childcare and small businesses, and perhaps most relevant to us, $350 billion for direct state and local aid. That last and many of the above are not included in the Republican proposal. So again, we are in this position of sort of being on the chopping block and waiting to see what Congress is going to do. I think that, you know, again, I've said this before, but the direct aid to cities is really critical. And in particular for us, it, I think, is if we were able to get that aid, it would, among other things, likely solve the issues that we have been trying to solve via furloughs. So just a quick, maybe a little digression, but a quick update there. I think you all know, right, that we have a $1.2 million budget gap that we had planned to fill through mandatory furloughs. We requested to try a voluntary program. We did do that. Then we were requested to move to work share. We have done that. And as an update, I think we have now 800-plus employees on work share plans. That includes most departments. Those plans have all been approved by the state. And some of them start this week. So, sorry, this is sort of an aside to an aside, but because we do have work share plans starting this week and going through mid-March, some of them, the capacity in departments is going to be, in some cases, significantly lower than usual. And so I would just ask that you all be patient with staff and be understanding if their response time is longer than it might have been in the past, or if they're not able to get to projects as quickly as we might like. Because in some cases, you know, again, there are whole offices that are going on work share and just have a lot less capacity than normal. So anyway, those did start this week, and we expect to achieve approximately 530,000 in savings, which obviously doesn't get us to the 1.2 million. And again, that's where I think the state and federal aid comes in at the federal level, that that would really be immensely helpful for our budget. And so encourage you, if you've got the appetite for it, to contact our delegation and reinforce the need at the local level for that funding. I'll pause there. I mean, there's a ton more to talk about at the federal level, but I'll pause there and see if there's any specific questions or anything, any comments on that.
I have a question. Can you give us the dates for the Affordable Exchange?
Yes, for the Affordable Care Act exchange. Again, it's February 25th through May 15th that the exchanges will be open. And I'll ask if we can get some content to you, for those of you who are doing blogs.
Yeah, I would like to send that out. Also, I have a second question, if no one else does, and doesn't look like it. I know that there's an executive order on mask requirement for transportation and different travels. Is there any discussion of expanding that, extending that to the city?
Yeah, so it actually does. Thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, there is an executive order around requiring masking on public transit, and it does cover the city. It does cover Madison Metro. So we are, at this point in time, triply covered on our buses. The federal government is requiring masks. The state is requiring masks, and the county public health is requiring masks. But yes, that's a good point. And I actually just spoke with our metro director today, and he's reviewing the guidance, both to passengers and drivers, in light of this new order, to see if there's anything that needs to be updated.
Okay. And do we have signs on the buses notifying people? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
All right, seeing none, let me just give you two other, much quicker, updates. I'm trying to respect your time here. The first is on the Guaranteed Income Project. And so, again, just to recap, we're receiving as much as $600,000 in funding from the mayors for a guaranteed income group at the national level. I'm working to raise additional funding locally. And we are putting together, you'll see, there's a task force coming through. So we're working to hopefully get your support in establishing that and then to make appointments to that. We're also working on getting an external fiscal sponsor. And there's a number of pieces that are recommended as best practices in setting up a pilot program, which include that the fiscal sponsor, but also a, quote, "disbursement partner" that helps to actually disperse the funds out to people. And then we're in conversations about what, where we should actually host the program, in addition to, you know, what the composition of the folks that are eligible for the program will be. Much more to come on that. We are sort of deep in the weeds right now of all of these design questions. But I did want to let you know that it is, we are working very hard on it. And I should say, actually, we have been, our local business task, which I think some of you are familiar with, has donated a project manager to us for this, who has been helping us work through and sort of keep on track with the project, which has been immensely helpful. So again, more to come on that soon. And then on the Violence Prevention Unit in Public Health, we are expecting to release the plan very soon. We were saying early February. It's now early February. So I think it is actually very soon that we'll have that out. And then you'll recall that there were two additional positions to be hired. We expect that the Violence Prevention Manager position will be posted in early February, and that the other position, the Violence Prevention Coordinator, will be posted in early March. So watch for those. We'll obviously always want to share out those jobs with our network, so we can get good people into the pool. So I think that's it from me. Again, happy to answer questions on any of the above, and also happy to, at any time, take requests or recommendations for future updates.
Well, thank you very much. That was a boat full of stuff, and I really appreciate it, too. And if we can get the information, a paragraph or so about the exchange, I really liked it, all of us to get that out to our constituents. One last question before you go, and that is, with the racial equity coming from the White House, was there any discussion on financial equity?
It's a good, a good question, Alder Carter. I think, we haven't heard anything specifically, but I think there's a lot of hints in what is we're seeing from the White House. And I would say, stay tuned. Obviously, the work that they're doing through the rescue package, I think, really points, you know, with the raising the minimum wage and other efforts around workplace safety, really sort of points in a direction. I think everybody is curious to see, there's a lot of talk about, after the rescue package comes the relief, or the rebuilding, or the stimulus, whatever you want to call it. I think everybody's eager to see what might be included in that. And I have not heard details on that, but hoping to watch that quite closely, and also to be able to have, again, conversations with the different federal agencies to help make some suggestions about what maybe should be in those packages.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that update, Mayor.
Thank you all. I will see you at the council meeting tonight.
And we will move on to item seven. That's the presentation of MAC and WIC. And who's going to lead off? Carla, will you be leading?
Yes, thank you so much, President Carter. And if you could allow me to screen share.
Stefan or Tori?
Let me make sure.
Should be good.
Yeah, you should be able to.
All right, I will pull that up. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Carla Garcia-Redd. I am the Chair of the Multicultural Affairs Committee, and I am here with Tori Larson.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tori Larson, and I am the Chair of the Women's Initiatives Committee.
And we presented, actually, it was a year ago, back February 2020, and I think it was in person. I think Tori and Mahant Joshi came in and stayed on our Workplace Climate Survey. But it's been an entire year. And so we wanted to make sure to let you know what the progress was on our recommendations. And so that's what we will be doing here today. To recap, though, just who we are. So the Multicultural Affairs Committee is charged with addressing issues and concerns of employees of color at the city.
And the Women's Initiative, oops, the Women's Initiatives Committee is charged with addressing issues and concerns related to women at the city of Madison.
And we teamed up together last year to create a Workplace Climate Survey that was really centered around the voices of employees of color and women at the city. And so, in terms of our timeline, this, we administered our survey summer of 2019. Then we analyzed the data and drafted a report in the fall of 2019. And then at the beginning of last year, so January 2020 is when we published the report. And then since then, we've been pretty busy adjusting to our new way of working, but still wanting to make sure that employees who provided information and shared their stories in the survey, we were acting upon those, just what they shared, and the need for really a culture shift. And so that is our big focus in 2021, is to continue to work on improving the workplace for women and employees of color.
Just to go over just a few highlights from the survey, there were concerns that employees expressed around employee development, and concerns related to safe and respectful workplaces were two areas of major concerns outlined through the report. Another piece of information, we found that women and people of color are more likely than average to experience harassment. Also, an important note, currently, the city only provides two options for gender, male and female. So it is not known how many city employees are non-binary or genderqueer. So that made data collection in that area, you know, very difficult to do. 1% of respondents identified as transgender, as this was a separate question in our survey. Then also, one out of four survey respondents experienced or witnessed harassment, bullying, or discrimination in the workplace. Forty-two percent of the respondents who experienced the harassment never reported it. And the main reasons why folks discussed that they were fearful of reporting was social retaliation, or being shunned or ostracized at work. And they also had some concerns about the trust related to the reporting process. Some of the comments on the survey are, when larger complaints don't result in discipline or change, it's not worth reporting the smaller ones. So that kind of gets at the trust concern I noted. And another one, when another female employee told me of a similar incident with the same harasser, I suggested she not report because of the negative experience I had. One out of four respondents reported receiving career mentoring. So this is getting into more of the employee development concern that we found through our survey. But only one out of eight African-American respondents reported receiving career mentoring.
Thanks so much, Tori. So we wanted to review some of the data, and this is something that, as committees, we try to go back to, is like, why are we pushing these recommendations? And it's because there's And it's because there's employees at the city that have had a negative experience, and we really want to make sure we're shifting away from that. So our recommendations revolved around three main areas, and they were very broad. We have some amazing staff, I think Norm Davis is here, Director of Civil Rights, that has been extremely supportive in all the work that Civil Rights Department is doing to really take this data seriously and continue to incorporate voices of employees as we change policy in the workplace. So our three recommendations were ensure a safe and respectful workplace environment for all employees, provide equitable access to professional development, opportunities in mentoring, and assess support, assess and support pay equity within the organization, specifically as it relates to race and gender. I want to highlight just what we've been up to, and so our, as a committee, we wanted to make sure that our recommendations had accountability and we were measuring progress. So we've been able to create just a quick tracker and had conversations with responsible agencies to ask them, will you support us in making this recommendation happen? Or will you support it in the future? And so that's the stated support. And then no progress means that we were unable to find a responsible agency, because the recommendation maybe it needs a little bit more research and root cause analysis to really understand why it is that this is an issue for the city. And we'll talk about that in just a little bit. But overall, we feel that leadership has been extremely supportive. I think the mayor has been extremely supportive with making sure that our recommendations are getting the resources and just the awareness needed in order to make change happen. So right now, we have 75% of our recommendations that are in active or stated support. And then, again, our commitment as a committee is to keep talking about it, bringing it up, because obviously priorities shift and change, and, you know, a pandemic happens, and it's very easy to kind of forget some of the, the things and under, issues that are happening, and so our goal is to make sure that they stay at the forefront. One way that we're doing this as a, as a committee is really through advocacy of policy changes. And so there were three main ones that were called out in our report. APM 3-5, which I, again, I thank you, Department of Civil Rights, for really incorporating voices and feedback into how this policy is, is administered, and what the experience is for employees that are using this as a remedy. There was the new APM 252, the Inclusion Workplace APM, that just acknowledged the fact that it is no longer sufficient to talk about just women and men in the workplace, but really that we need to be understanding all marginalized genders and expanding our own notions of gender and how people are included in the City of Madison. And then the Training APM is currently pending, but again, when it comes to professional development, are we being aware of the different experiences for employees of color? And this plays a huge role into promotions and training and being able to keep employees of color at the city. Additionally, in 2020, I think having a lot of this data to kind of have a conversation around, but also it just gathered really like-minded employees. And so as events have come up, so for example, the Black Lives Matter movement that was happening in the summer, it allowed employees to really be able to gather in affinity and to ask for more changes with those voices. And similarly, the Women's Initiative Committee was able to write a memo and ensure accountability when it comes to the way that alders are interacting with the public. And so we will continue to do advocacy related to our recommendations. Another item that we did was civility posters, and so this is not nearly enough, but we know that civility in general, and I think as alders, I am very grateful for the way that mo, most alders, the amount of time and energy that are given to our city, and we know that it can be difficult to take stakeholder input, and so we want to make sure that employees feel as public servants, that they, they are respected regardless if somebody disagrees with them. And so this is something that we are hoping to talk more about this year, and would love just some comments or conversation in terms of how we as employees can really push civility in the city, both internally and then externally, specifically with how we interact with the public. And then one program that we are super excited about is our MACWIC Peer Advisors. And so this is really, the idea is to have trusted contacts at the city that are available to talk about any workplace issue. So anything from just someone being kind of mean at work, all the way to harassment and not knowing what to do. And this is more saying, do we have a workplace where people feel that their psychological safety and the ability to have some type of remedy? So just knowing that there are resources and that there are options in allowing employees to make up their own opinion about that is our goal with this group, but we feel really fortunate just to be able to start this program, and hopefully we'll be able to report back on how the program is used a year from now. And so we just, again, our goal here was to update the Executive Committee on how we were doing on our recommendations, and so we're asking for your continued support as recommendations come up. In particular, we want to keep items that have received no support or no progress in 2020 on your mind. And so the four are just harassment from the public, staff treatment by elected officials, training and code of conduct, a pay equity study, and then a position study on racial, a racial equity analysis on the position study process at the city. And so with that, if there are any questions.
I have a question, Carla. Can you tell me, oh, Alder Bedar, go ahead.
Thank you so much, President Carter. Thank you for the incredible amount of work that, that you have done. It's, it's really very nice to see the tracking, so that we can make sure that, you know, we're reaching real goals with, with the work. So one question I had is about the peer support, I think, or peer specialists. So, and just out of my, my own interest and understanding, sometimes what's very challenging in those roles is to kind of know when the issue is raised to a level where there needs to be like, you know, investigation and, you know, kind of that HR piece of it, and when it is that the individual really wants to share information just as a peer, without, without wanting that to be disclosed to the organization. So what kind of trends, so all of that, to ask the question, what kind of training do they, do they receive to be able to know what to do in those situations?
Carla and I both actually fortunately worked for HR, so that really helped us. We all worked together to, to form the training, also worked closely with our EAP staff and the Civil Ri, the Department of Civil Rights, and then in addition, had the Attorney's Office review the program as well, just to make sure that we were compliant, and also to make sure that folks are adequately trained. In addition, we conduct monthly meetings with our peer advisors, where we discuss any issues that pop up, any concerns folks that are having, and then we also provide ongoing training as well. And then our, our peer advisors also know that they can reach out to us if they have any of those situations that are like, gosh, should I go beyond this? Should I report this? They can, they can connect with us, and we can provide that additional information for them.
And then just one for, that's, that's really great. It's, it's great for them to, to have this ongoing kind of support and, and ability. One additional question, how, how do you share the information about the availability and their, their roles with the rest of the staff? So is there like, was there an email, is it a flyer? Like, how do they know who they are and what their roles are?
We've done both. We did a Mass City email to announce it, and then we've also done flyers, because some of our agencies don't have access to city email. So Carla had some really great large posters made that were posted up at all our agencies. We've tried to get, some of our agencies have TV monitors to put things up. We've, we've gotten our information out there, and now we're in the phase where the group is discussing, are there different department meetings that we can go to? We did make a, we did talk at a department division head meeting, but we might be doing more targeted talks at, at specific departmental meetings as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Those were great questions, and Alder Bedar, you took about three of mine. So I, I just want to know, which is definitely all right. So Tori, how do, how do the, the employees know about these advisors? I mean, are they posted, or do they come through what?
Yeah, yeah, we, we email them all out, we, we post them out, and just trying to reach out. I think things are a bit more challenging, too, right now with COVID, with folks working at home. So trying to, I think we're in the next phase of, okay, what meetings can we get out to, to let folks know? We have had folks reach out already to our advisors, so we know the information is getting out there. I think we just need to advertise and, and push more.
And my second question is, what, when you, you put up the PowerPoint presentation regarding, I think you said, one out of eight African-American employees receive mentorships, can you tell me what ideas do you, does HR and OD have for changing that and making that ratio smaller?
I'll let Carla go, because I know she's doing a lot of great work on leadership programming.
Yeah, I think the, the first thing is always just awareness. A lot of times, like, you know, we, we rely on data to kind of give us a little bit of that justification, even when we know that, that people may not feel supported just by anecdotal stories that, that we hear. And so I think our big focus as a committee is to really just make sure that executives and HR and that different departments are aware that this is the, the feeling, and to allow the departments to then kind of like, think of, how do we counter this? And so, yeah, luckily, I started in HR and OD in April of this year, and so it's really nice to be able to kind of wear both hats and to be able to inform that. But I think our, my big focus is really making sure to include voices early on in planning so that inform the type of training that's happening, because, you know, just providing a, you know, not all training is gonna, is gonna feel the same for, for certain people. And so we have a couple of big leadership programs that are particularly targeted for employees of color coming up, and so hopefully that will.
And then once they go to the advisor, and the advisor feels that it needs to go further, is that when they get in touch with Norm or you, or what?
Yeah, so with the peer advisors, it's definitely a, like, an escalation approach where depending on what the issue is, if it's something that people can just chat about, then that's great. It's more of opening up the dialogue about the workplace, but the advisors have been trained to where, if it's something that needs to be reported, when it is appropriate to go to DCR, to go to EAP, to go to HR, to make sure that any inappropriate behavior is not happening. But a lot of, our peer advisor program is meant for that gray area, right? Sometimes it's not, it's not very, it's not like, okay, this is obviously not appropriate and should not be happening in the workplace. It's always that line where a lot of the times you're like, I don't, I don't actually know what this is, but talking, we hope will make employees feel more supported.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. We will go on to update, oh, I'm sorry, Norm, did you have, oh, he's gone, okay. I was going to ask Norm, oh, there you are, Norm. I was going to ask you if you had anything to say. Go ahead, Norm, sorry about that.
That's okay, no problem. Thank you to Carla and Tori for this, not only the report, but the great work you've been doing around addressing, helping to address these issues and, and your leadership. The only thing that I wanted to add is, is just another measure that is in play now that came online, I'll say the later part of 2020, and that is that the mayor is checking in with all the ComGroupe 21 department units on the anniversary date of their, of their contracts. And so that's an opportunity for her to have a deeper discussion with them about various in performance as it relates to the workforce, as it relates to DCR-related data, HR data, and now she's added some budget considerations in there as well. So, you know, I think that's something that's going to be evolving over time, and as the mayor sees trends, as she sees opportunities to add to, or to, you know, have a, have another part of the discussion that she can add in some of the, the issues that we've been talking about tonight, especially regarding mentorships and training opportunities for employees. So that, that's another activity that, that's ongoing.
Great, thank you so much for that update. Does anyone have any questions for Norm? Okay, thank you, Norm. And we will go on to item eight, which is an update. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Council President.
Oh, there you are.
Thank you. The TFOGS Implementation Work Group has been working on continuing through a recommendations tracker, which tracks all the recommendations from the Task Force for Government Structure final report, and has put it into different sections with next steps, and that is available on our agenda, and I'll talk about that a little bit tonight. I wanted to see if Alder Foster wanted to give an update on our work on publicizing the referendum. It's been a big issue to make sure that people know the referendum is happening, providing an update to the community without obviously any sort of partisan slant. I don't know if Alder Foster wants to paraphrase here, otherwise I will try to provide an update.
Alder Foster, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Thank you, and apologies, I wasn't really prepared for this, but yeah, so as part of the resolution that was passed, the resolution corrected the TFOGS Implementation Committee, Common Council Executive Committee to work with the mayor's office to share out information around referendum questions to the public. So the TFOGS Implementation Group discussed this at our last two meetings, two meetings ago, we asked for, to identify what support would be available via the mayor's office to work on that, and at our last meeting, we had some follow-up conversation on that. I would say the response that we got back is, you know, very limited resources available to help get the word out. So at this point, Attorney Strange is, has drafted a kind of a one-page document that will be uploaded to the existing TFOGS website, and Katie Crowley from the mayor's office said she will be able to forward that on to TIOs to share out via their channels. So I think at this point, that's kind of the extent of the educational outreach component to help the public know what these referendum questions are going to be on the spring ballot. So I think we wanted to just bring that back here, here if anybody had any feedback on that, or thoughts or other ideas, or interest in trying to do any additional information sharing ahead of the election. sharing ahead of the election.
Thank you. Alder Bass, then Alder Kimball?
Thank you, President Carter. And Alder Foster, thanks for the update. One thing I was talking with the City Attorney Office to, and with the staff, an idea about probably if IT, because we as an Alder cannot share information on our blog. So as an example, I have over eight hundred subscribers and I cannot do effectively, communicate effectively, as I have election many other of us. So if I, IT department can, you know, if we can write a blog and they can send this key information about the referendum, that could be, I don't know if City Attorney is here to provide some information, that could be one angle to share information.
That's a good suggestion. I think we can, we can check on that. I would expect, as long as it's not generated by the Alders, if it's a kind of a citywide communication, perhaps it could be sent out to all subscribers of all Alder blogs. I think that's something we should check on, it's a good suggestion.
Alder Kimball? You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, just one other, one other aspect that's going to happen is that Assistant City Attorney Strange and the city clerk are going to do like a district reports session on the referendum. So they've talked to City Channel, and they're going to do an informational session on that that can also be distributed to the public.
That'd be great, especially if we could get a link to that. Alder Harrington McKinney? You can unmute yourself.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. Thank you very, very much, Madam President. My question is, is that since there is a, a deep push or interest in informing and educating the public, and there have been several suggestions that have come forth tonight, I mean, is there a work plan for that education? I mean, will something be going out specifically? I know that we are limited in terms of what we can publish on our Alder blog, but I absolutely did hear that if something is generated through, it's, it's a consistent message that is generated perhaps through Attorney Strange, that it is a notifier, I mean, because there should be something that will be out and available to the public in terms of educational. Are there, are there two things coming out or three things coming out? Or are there specific dates that you want to hit so that they will be available to, to voters prior to them going to the poll and, and seeing that question outline?
Alder Kimball, can you, is Attorney Strange on?
I mean, I can answer that. I think.
Oh, thank you.
According to the, the resolution, the CCEC and the mayor's office were supposed to collaborate to develop a plan. And, you know, the TFOGS implementation was to feed, you know, to sort of prep the two bodies, but this really needs to be owned by the whole city. It, it doesn't need to be owned by the TFOGS Implementation Group, it needs to be owned by the council and the mayor. So the idea in that resolution was that the mayor's office and the, and the council would together come up with that communication plan. So we've, you know, in our little group, we have, you know, put out our recommendations, we've tried to wrangle information and, and figure out what the resources are to do it. So I think it's for this body and the mayor to, to really come up with that plan and implement it.
Okay, thank you. And Alder Furman?
I, I was gonna go ahead and continue with an update, unless anybody else wants to talk about any, any more aspects of that. So the other, the other thing that we're, so one of the big things we're focused on has been the Committee of the Whole meetings. We have done, had discussion about the Chief of Staff position, job definition, and the council office, and we're looking forward to that meeting. But one of the meetings that we're, we're hoping to schedule, and I'm, in the process speaking to President Carter about, is a meeting to talk about recommendations really related to our, our meetings. Right now, we're sort of tentatively calling it virtual meeting protocols because that's what we're having now. We've learned a lot from our virtual meetings, and there are a lot of recommendations from TFOG related to meetings that, that certainly apply to virtual meetings. And so we're hoping to have a Committee of the Whole meeting to really dive into those recommendations and, and really discuss those recommendations based on where we are now and how we can improve the process now and implement some of those changes in our current configuration with a, a look on, you know, what the future looks like once we're all vaccinated and able to possibly get back together again. So I, I encourage you, when the TFOGS agenda comes out, there is a link to our tracker, I encourage you to look at that. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. We are trying to meet every two weeks, and we're continuing to try to bundle things so we can come to the council to, to discuss the recommendations and the implementation of those recommendations. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Do we have any additional questions for Alder Furman? Okay. So with that said, Alder Kimball?
I'm not a question, but I'd just like this to be the, you know, the communications plan for the referendum, if that could be on, on CCEC's agenda and we can all be thinking about it and coming up with more ideas of how we can push this information out. I think it's, you know, it's in our hands now to, to make sure the public is notified and informed and educated about, about the issue.
Okay, Lisa, can you put that on our next agenda? Thank you. Thank you, Alder Kimball. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I see no objections, so I will entertain a unanimous vote for adjournment. We will see you in an hour. Stefan, see how, see how efficient we're getting for you? It's all, it's all for you, Stefan.
We are proud of you.
We'll see you guys in an hour. There you go. We'll see you in an hour, you guys. Bye-bye.